We will start with the roll call. Carnop?
Here.
Puroito?
Here.
Stark? Stark?
Here.
And Thornton?
Chair Delvo, I think Thornton is not signed on right now, but we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Before we call the meeting to order, due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to Residents to Stay Home and Guidance About Limiting Person-to-Person Contact During the COVID-19 Coronavirus Pandemic, this meeting of the Fridley Independent School District 14 School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D.021, Meetings by Telephone or Other Electronic Means. Due to the health pandemic, the school board determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member or superintendent to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular meeting location due to the public, due to the health pandemic. Citizens who would like to address the board on a topic on the meeting agenda may email the Fridley School Board at schoolboard@fridley.k12.mn.us prior to the meeting. Please include your full name, the agenda item you wish to speak to, and your question or comment on the agenda item. School Board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are not speaking. School Board members wishing to speak should state their name, then wait to be recognized for, by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board members should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call, and each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as is reasonably possible. So with that, I would call this meeting to order, the April 24th, April 21st School Board Business Meeting. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a suggested motion to approve the agenda for the April 21st Board Meeting?
Motion to approve by Puroito.
Thank you, thank you, Donna. A second, do I have a second for the motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second by Thornton. Motion by Puroito, seconded by Thornton, let's do the roll call for your vote. All those in favor, please say yes, it is easier to understand on the microphone instead of I. Uh, Delvo, yes. Carnop?
I, sorry, yes.
Puroito?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We'll start off with our spotlight recognition, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Heil.
Thank you Chair Delvo and Board Members. I am pleased to announce Employee of the Month for the month of March 1st. It is Sharon McLaren, who was a receptionist at Fridley High School. So congratulations to Sharon McLaren, our Employee of the Month for March. Sharon has served as our greeter and attendance clerk at Fridley High School for four years. In the main office, Sharon's energy for our students and our staff is second to none. She is always extremely positive, caring, and helpful. A staff member describes Sharon as loyal, protective, dependable, and non-judgmental. Additionally, Sharon is known as a great listener, as she instinctively knows when someone is having a rough time, and is ready with calming words and hugs. The students love her, and the staff respect her hard work and her dedication. Sharon has the ability not only to connect with her students, but to help create teachable moments. From life lessons with Sharon to listening to our students' needs, she is a key part of our Fridley family. Sharon also takes pride in being the main contact when people walk into our building. Safety and security is her job, which she takes very seriously to ensure not only are our students and staff safe, but our entire building is secure at all times. Sharon is also has a contagious laugh and smile that can warm anyone's day. We're lucky to have Sharon as a member of our team and congratulate her on being Employee of the Month for March, and that came from Patty Hand, Principal at Fridley High School. I also would like to share today with the board, Employee of the Month for the month of April, and that is Sarah Burghart, the Community Specialist at Fridley Public Schools. So congratulations to Fridley Public Schools' April 2020 Employee of the Month, Sarah Burghart. Ms. Burghart is a Communication Specialist in the District Office, and is responsible for the publication, website, social media, and photography our community enjoys so much. Sarah is a hard worker who takes great pride in the work, and always ensures each final product, product of communication that she produces is both professional, uniquely creative, and produces the desired impact of marketing. Her work ethic is unparalleled. We are truly lucky to have her as a valued member of our communications team, and congratulations to Sarah, and thank you for serving our district and community well. And that was written by Jaiel McLamore, who's the Director of the Community Communications Department.
Thank you, Dr. Heil. And we certainly see a lot as board members of both of those with Sarah in Communications, and then at the front desk always, and she's very diligent about making sure that people are signed in, and as she should be, so we, we really appreciate that. Superintendent and staff reports, we have a Fridley High School video. Dr. Heil, do you want to introduce us?
Okay, thank you Chair Delvo and School Board Members. First, I would like to take the time to acknowledge the incredible work that has been done by our Communications Department during our school buildings' closings. They have served as a conduit between the district, our families, and the Fridley Public School community. You have seen some of their work over the past few weeks, and I would like to share with you one of their products, as they have created this school year for the high school. So please enjoy the Fridley High School video, created by Jaiel McLamore, David Weber, and Sarah Burghart.
Welcome to Fridley High School!
Hello, and welcome to Fridley High School. My name is Patty Hand, and I'm the Principal. Fridley High School is an international baccalaureate world school that serves students in grades nine through 12. All students participate in the IB, whether pursuing an IB diploma, or career-related certification, or general education. We also offer an exciting array of academic opportunities and extracurricular activities that make our school a well-rounded option for students.
Hi, I'm Alexis. Fridley High School is a diverse and welcoming school, where students are encouraged to look outside their own personal space and take in the cultures of those around them, both locally and globally, as part of the International Baccalaureate. Fridley Public Schools is the home to students who speak 46 different home languages, making it a true world schools district.
Hi, I'm Asanti, and I'm pursuing the International Baccalaureate Diploma at Fridley High School. The International Baccalaureate Diploma for me is preparation for college and for my future. I feel like ever since I began to pursue this diploma in high school, I have learned who I am as a person and what I enjoy. It is my dream to attend an IB League college, specifically Harvard University. So as I continue with my high school career, I learn how to improve my skills so that I could be at my best at all times.
The benefits of the International Baccalaureate Programs for students at Fridley High School are many. Freshmen and sophomores continue with the Middle Years Program, a challenging, comprehensive curriculum that encourages students to make connections between subjects studied and the real world, as well as develop critical and reflective thinking skills. Juniors and seniors have several options, including choosing between the Diploma Program, which is college preparatory in nature, with a strong emphasis on intercultural understanding and open-mindedness, or the Career Related Program, which incorporates the values of IB into a unique program, which addresses the needs of students preparing to go directly into a career post-high school.
Avid is a four-year college readiness program dedicated to supporting our students in the academic middle. Avid's mission is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society. We do this by providing academic support for advanced classes, offering student-led tutorial sessions, teaching structured organizational skills, establishing a positive and supportive learning community, featuring guest speakers who are experts in various career fields, and having field trips to explore college and career choices. To date, 100% of students who have gone through our Avid program through graduation have gone on to college.
Hello, I'm Lennon, and academics are important to me because college is on the horizon. The reason I chose Fridley was because of its way to prepare me for life beyond high school. The teachers are there to help you when you're struggling, and they also give you the freedom to learn it on your own.
Hi, I'm Lulu. In addition to academics, students have opportunities to participate in athletics and activities. At Fridley High School, I've been involved in activities such as speech, tennis, theater, youth and government, and Performing Arts Club. These experiences have allowed me to grow as a person, meet new friends, and explore new leadership opportunities.
We encourage all students to be involved in activities outside the classroom. These are the years where students are not only forming some of the most influential relationships of their young lives, but also skills and character-building opportunities that will benefit them throughout life. Whether playing on a field, letting your creativity blossom, or working together in a collaboration that increases your knowledge, Fridley High School has the opportunities to help you grow and succeed.
Hi, I'm Luis, and I'm a sophomore at Fridley High School. Fridley High School has a very diverse and welcoming atmosphere. There's a lot of opportunities and different groups that are all a part of the high school. If I really need to talk to someone, I know that I have access to the deans, because they're always willing to listen to you and see how you're feeling in your classes.
Our priority at Fridley High School is to offer an inclusive culture and climate where all students feel that they belong. Support services are available in a number of forms, such as deans to guide you through your high school career, an on-staff psychologist to assist in mental health issues, and a social worker to help with balancing school and home life. We also have a number of professionals in place who work with our students to get them to reach their fullest potentials.
Hello, I'm Michael. There are many outstanding reasons to attend Fridley High School. All students participate in the rigorous International Baccalaureate Diploma Program that provides inquiry-based learning. Avid College Prep Program is offered, as well as in-house college fairs to expose students to many post-secondary opportunities. School-wide engagement opportunities for students, including restorative circles, link crew, culturally and linguistically responsive training, and social-emotional learning. Grade-level deans, psychologists, social workers, and more.
Fridley High School, we're IB and we belong!
We just want to say thank you to our tremendous Communication Department and all of their work. This video has been on our district YouTube channel, and is used by Principal Hand to promote Fridley Public School, High School, to different students that are interested in learning about our high school. Another update that I would like to share with you is during our school building closure during COVID-19, that our nutritional services has served over 7,370 meals since March 30th, with an average of 526 meals being served per day. As well as our community ed department has hosted, on average, 23 students for emergency worker childcare. So I just want to thank our nutritional staff, our pairs, our CE staff, who have been able to assist with our critical childcare and helping out our community. Also, last but not least, I'd like to thank all of our Fridley Public School staff on their incredible work during this pandemic. I couldn't ask for better staff to be out there supporting our families and our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heil. It would be appropriate to give a District of the Month Award, just like we do for, for teacher of the month, or excuse me, Staff of the Month. Just really, people have gone above and beyond, the all staff, from teachers, custodial staff, administration, all the way throughout the entire district. And we should, we should be proud, and I know I speak on behalf of all the board members about how grateful we are to have the employees that we do in this district, and what a phenomenal job that they're doing. So it's not going unnoticed. The resolutions for, we're moving into the business action portion of our meeting. The first and monthly resolution for accepting gifts is School Board Policy 706, which establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts into the district. So Minnesota Statute 465.03 states, "The school board may accept a gift, grant, or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the school district. The following persons donated to Stevenson Elementary for a total of $120, a Mara Prize; the following persons donated to Hayes Elementary School for a total of $526, Deanna Roth, Child and Teen Medical Center, and Fridley United Methodist Women; the following persons donated to Fridley Middle School, Bob's Produce, 50, excuse me, 50 box lunches for the History Day judges; and the following persons donated to the Fridley Nutritional Services Department, Lori Brooks, ongoing donations to reduce, to reduce food lunch account debts; and Girl Scout Troop from Stevenson donating 59 cases of cookies." Do we have a suggest, a motion to approve and accept the gifts to the Fridley School District for the month of, this is actually the month of March and April?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Thornton. We will be taking vote by roll call, because we are on video, to ensure that everyone is still with us. Delvo, yes. Carnop?
Yes.
Puroito? Puroito? If you could unmute. I'll move on, if you could unmute, Donna? For the, for the roll call. Puroito? I'll move on to Stark?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Puroito, yes, sorry.
Thank you, Donna. Motion carried with affirmative, fully in support of the resolution. Moving on, we have another resolution. This is to terminate and non-renew the teaching contract of certain non-tenured probationary teachers for 2020, 2021, whereas a probationary teacher in District 14, whereas the names listed below are probationary teachers in Independent School District 14. Be it resolved, the School Board, District 14, pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 5, that the teaching contract of a probationary teacher in the Independent School District is hereby terminated without pay or fringe benefits at the close of the current 2021 school year. Be it further resolved, that the written notice be sent to the teacher regarding School Board, regarding School Board termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be substantially in the following form. So each of those receives a letter by the clerk notifying them of their termination at tonight's meeting, April 21st, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to terminate and non-renew the teaching contracts of certain non-tenured probationary teachers for 2020, 21 as follows? Garrett Bruce, Shayna Dodson, Hannah Knapp, Andrew Kaloski, Annie Olson, Kadeja Pierce, and Michael, Michael Ritchie, and Ashley Yaritz. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Motion by Thornton, do I have a second? Thornton made the motion, do I have a second? On the motion? I have you down as making the motion, Carol.
Second.
Stark, second. Motion by Thornton, seconded by Stark. I will do the roll call. Delvo, yes. Carnop?
Yes.
Puroito?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have a motion for approval of the 2019 through 2021 Clerical Master Agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the Clerical Master Agreement?
Puroito with a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Puroito, seconded by Carnop. Another roll call vote. Delvo, yes. Carnop?
Yes.
Puroito?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
And motion carried. The next motion is for the second reading and adoption of policies. And we have two presenters for a number of policies. I will start with the couple of policies, and ask Laura Seifert-Hurtling to review those.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, I need a motion first. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good evening, School Board Members, Chair Delvo, Superintendent Heil. Thank you for listening to the second readings for this evening. We have four policies that are for second readings. Policy 414 is mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. Policy 415 is a new policy that we talked about back in February. It's mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. 506P was a policy that was changed into a procedure. It's chemical, student chemical misuse, it'll now be a procedure. And Policy 506, student discipline. So all these policies, there were no changes from the first reading, so I ask that you take these policies into consideration for adoption from the second reading, please.
Thank you, and before we do a motion on those, we'll have Ike Isaacson present the second policy reading of Policy 522, and then we'll, we'll make a motion and vote on all five at the same time, please. Mr. Isaacson?
Thank you Board members, Delvo, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil. Second reading of Policy 522, Sex Nondiscrimination. The purpose of that is to protect students from discrimination on the basis of sex pursuit to Title IX of the Education Amendments of 72 and the Human Rights Act. There are no changes since the first reading.
Do, are there any questions? And if, if hearing none, I'll give you a minute to respond. Is there anyone who would make a motion to accept the second reading and adoption of policies 414, 415, 506P, 506, and 522? Do I have a motion to accept the second reading and adoption of policies?
A sec, um, motion to accept.
Motion by Puroito, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Thornton. We will do the vote by roll call. Delvo, yes. Carnop?
Yes.
Puroito?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
And policies are adopted, motion carried. We have another resolution for an approval of board meetings during COVID-19 pandemic taking place via teleconference format. And what this resolution is for, the open meeting, the, all of our meetings for the rest, the remainder of, through June, have already been set, and the open meeting has been, has been filed. And this is just allowing us to not have to refile the meetings that were already filed, but to note that they will be by teleconference format. Do I have a motion to approve the School Board meetings take place via teleconference until further notice?
So moved.
Second. By Stark, seconded by Puroito. Roll call vote, Delvo, yes. Carnop?
Yes.
Puroito?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
And Thornton?
Yes.
And motion carried. Final motion on the business section of the meeting is for the consent agenda. The, the motion would be to approve the consent agenda of routine action items, including the minutes of the regular School Board meeting and work session held on February 18th, 2020, and the work session held on April 2nd, 2020. Monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leave of absence, terminations, resignations, and retirements. Approval of health insurance rates, insurance for married spouses, memorandum of understanding, transportation contracts for 2021, 20 through 21, and 2021 through 22, and Metropolitan Regional Arts Council grants for $10,000 for summer production of Mamma Mia by Fridley Community Center, or Community Theater. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Thornton. And we will do the roll call. Delvo, yes. Carnop?
Yes.
Puroito?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Motion carried, consent, consent agenda is approved. Now we have the monthly financial report. Excuse me, one moment here. So we have a first reading of four policies. If I could invite Brady Hoffman to review those policies, please. This is a first reading.
Good evening Chair Delvo, Member of the School Board, Superintendent Heil. We have four policies for first reading. The first one is number 421, Gifts to Employees and School Board Members. And this change just adds in some further definition of financial interest as it relates to an interested person, and it means any ownership or control on an asset which has the potential to produce a monetary return. So just provide some additional clarification on, on what that means within the policy. The second policy is 510 on school activities. This one is just a little bit of realignment, so it contains similar language around the Superintendent or designee shall be responsible for conducting an annual evaluation of the school activity programs and presenting the results and any recommendations to the School Board. The proposed changes incorporate that the School Board will ensure that any funds raised for extracurricular activities will be spent only on extracurricular activities. This is tied to some new Gatsby statements, and these are considered restricted funds now within our general fund, and are earmarked that way. and are earmarked that way. We are striking language that is covered in our student handbook. It belongs more in the handbook than in the policy, so we are proposing striking that language. And then the next policy is 703, the Annual Audit. And this is just a little bit of terminology cleanup, just to make sure we're referencing the correct Minnesota Leo Compliance Audit Guide as issued by the Office of the State Auditor. And then the last policy this evening for first reading is 802, Disposition of Obsolete Equipment and Materials. And it is expanding on page three to include a tablet device. And when it comes to the exception for surplus computers and the ability to convey those to another school district, the State Department of Corrections, the Board of Trustees of Minnesota State Colleges and Universities, or to a family of a student residing in the district whose total family income meets the federal poverty guidelines. This revision will also include that the excess devices can be conveyed to a charitable organization. And then it adds a section to that in the event that we have surplus computers, the School Board could adopt a written policy by which we could sell them to students within the school district for a fee as determined by that resolution. And it walks through what those steps would look like.
Great. We will have the month to review these and if there are additional questions, to move those forward. And they will be returned as a second reading in the May board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Reports from School Board members. I'm going to start with Superintendent Dr. Heil on Tigers United.
Thank you, Chair Delvo, and School Board members. Tiger United are students that represent our School Board student representatives. They are not here today, but we are hoping to bring all of our Tiger United students that have participated in our board meetings to the May board meeting so that we can recognize them for their contributions this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Association of Metropolitan School Districts Board Meeting held on March 6th. And Ms. Stark, if you would share your update.
We had Neil Kashkari, who is the President and CEO of the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis, and Justice Ellen Page came to talk about constitutional amendment for the state of Minnesota around the achievement gap at education. So they're really trying to move from the phrasing of providing all students with an adequate education to quality education. The Minneapolis Federal Reserve is looking at why gaps exist and that has to do with their interest in creating a workforce that works, creating quality graduates, all of those sorts of things that come out of our public schools. They surveyed residents across the state and about eighty percent of them said they supported the constitutional amendment that would make education a civil right. They also discussed how to use the law to close the gap and working with the legislature to place that issue on the ballot. They discussed the amendment language and addressed criticisms of the language. And they also discussed fully preparing students to participate in society, democracy, and the economy. Areas of enforcement and funding were a concern that the entire group discussed. It sounds like they've got a pretty strong campaign team and a campaign plan. So they're fleshing out some of the critiques that their opponents are giving them. So we will see how that moves on in the future.
Are there any downsides to this or anything we should be concerned about?
Yes. So there's a couple of things depending on who you ask. How to define quality education that can open up school districts for lawsuits, that sort of thing. And also unfunded mandates. I asked a question about how they're going to anticipate and prepare for unfunded mandates and what that looks like in the state budget. The answer I received wasn't particularly fleshed out, but I do think, I hope, that that's something that they're working on. Because as we all know, budgets are an important detail of what we do. So I think the two major things that they're really trying to combat and clarify from their end is the how to define quality and protecting from lawsuits, and then the unfunded mandate question.
Okay, I'll look forward to hearing more about that as this moves along. Thank you. Thank you, Ivana. Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting, and this report is by myself. We held our first phone meeting. We haven't gone to video yet in 916. I think that's our next month meeting. The, there wasn't a lot of really, it was mostly routine information at our last meeting. It was a pretty light agenda. We did approve the North Lease Extension on the Wells North Building. So that, that gets us in that lease until 2025. We approved a proposal for property casualty liability and errors and omissions that month and reviewed some, there were a number of retirements in, in the 916 district, and then reviewed the school calendar and dates for events such as graduations, which there are several at the Area Learning Center as well as their Quora High School. Of course, that is subject all to change yet. So the main thing that was really celebrated at this meeting was that they've been able to move their student population to distance learning, which the students who are in the 916 district, it's a Level Four setting. The majority of students need one-on-one care. And to be able to distance learn with students who have that intensive of services during the day is really a major feat. And they've done just some really phenomenal things. It's something we never thought could ever be done. And while it's better to have them in the classroom, as it is with our students at Fridley, it's been amazing what they've been able to put together in a short amount of time. So that is it for School Board Member Reports. We have important future School Board Member Dates. The AMSD, the Associations for Metropolitan School Districts Board Meeting is May 1st, 2020 at 7:00 AM. The Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting is May 6th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. And the Fridley Public School Board Meeting will be May 19th, 2020, work session at 5:30, open forum at 7:00, and business meeting at 7:30. That will be virtual. As of, as of today's date, that will be a virtual meeting, as is tonight. With that, that is, we have covered our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Do I have a second? Moved by Purido, seconded by Stark, and we will do the roll call for the vote. Delvo, yes? Carnop?
Yes.
Purido?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
And Thornton?
Yes.
Motion carried. This, the April 21st School Board Meeting is adjourned at 8:24 PM.